Greetings, everybody. Those that are here in person tonight and those that are live streaming for our last meeting of this calendar year. Got a little bit on the agenda tonight, so bear with us. Got some a lot of presentations and some discussions. But before we kick all that off, we've got some swearing in ceremonies that for our police department. So I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Our mayor pro tem, Dr. Kenwan McCray, is listening to our meeting by phone. She'll be able to vote by phone and comment by phone. She'll also be watching live stream the meeting as well. And then Commissioner Brian Marley has a work function that he is attending currently as we are talking here in the meeting, and he will join us a little bit later on this evening, if possible, after his work function. So with that said, call the meeting to order. Please rise for the invocation and please stand, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Mighty God, we humbly come before you and say thanks for a very successful year. Dear God, as this year comes to a close, we pray that you lift up our leaders, place a hedge of protection around them and their families, our town staff, all town employees, our police and fire department personnel. God, when we come together for next year, please give them knowledge, wisdom, understanding to make decisions that will make our community a great community. Bless them to operate efficiently and fulfill the intended purpose of our government. We also pray for wisdom in the budgets and financial stewardship of all and all business decisions. Why should there lie to be divine clarity when there is misunderstanding? Help citizens and leaders to listen to each other and to seek to understand before being misunderstood. And remind us that we all should have one common goal, and that goal should be working together for the good of our community. And as this is our last meet of the year, we pray for blessings, protection, and guidance in the coming year. And may our prayers be answered abundantly. And as we embrace the future, let our faith be our compass. Love be our guiding principles, and prayer be our source of strength. These blessings wax through you, and we function as one nation under God, and we thank you in Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen. A blessing to the nations, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice.
Even though we don't have two commissioners with us tonight, we do have three, so we have a forum we can go ahead and conduct our meeting. Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda, either additions or deletions?
To move.
A motion second? Motion second, all in favor? Mayor Pro Tem agrees, seeing everyone agrees to the approval of the agenda, but no one opposed or carries. Moving on to official comments, manager's report, and that's the chance.
Thank you, Mayor, and greetings to our fellow commissioners. First page of the manager's report customarily includes your community corner. Christmas at Lake was a success. It was cold, but the cookies and hot chocolate were great. Breakfast with Santa was a hit. Our second parade of lights was amazing. I actually think that this turned into a contest because everybody's involved, everybody's trying to decorate their trucks and cars. We had staff members and departments in our parade this year, so I'm definitely looking forward to next year. The Hope Mills Fire Department trained eighteen members of staff in CPR. And I will say that we are officially a fire department that is designated for installation of car seats now. Anybody in the community that has trouble, I have an eight-year-old daughter, but as a struggling father about a year ago, I was about to kick my door in trying to figure out how to put this car seat in. And I went to Stony Point, and they figured, they actually taught me how to actually install a car seat, and that's something I'll never forget. Our fire department now has that certification as well. Second page is the community corner, year in review, and it's really just a collage of images of all of different service-based activities that we conducted this year, from sending our first responders to chimney ride, to September eleventh, to Juneteenth, to just remembering what we went through with the hurricanes and things of that nature. It's a collage of different events. We got our officers in here that received the valor awards this year and things of that nature. The third page is very important because it's a year at a glance in terms of all the things that were accomplished or approved in the town in the year 2024. If you look at it, Department Head Budget Priorities Meeting, Cumberland County Legislative Delegation Budget Priorities Meeting, Pay Study Approval, Town Manager Officially Sworn In, Diver Circle has been repaired, Woodland Hills, the multi-use path, Reed's Journey, all-inclusive playground, these are all the things we did, but there's something down here tied to inspections that I want to highlight, and this is just since July. Our inspection department has conducted over fourteen hundred and twenty-two inspections since July of this year. That is a total of seven hundred and forty-one permits, again, since July, with an estimated value of nineteen million dollars. So if you were to double that, that's what we're looking at the last half of fiscal year, all the way through the first half of this fiscal year. The second half of that are just the town projects that have been done by the market. Freddy's, Chipotle, Wawa Lemonade, Sweetwater, Wawa is under construction. So this third page of the manager's report really provides you with a very good snapshot of everything that was accomplished in this town over the 2024 year. Last page, it will always remain an update on SCDOT construction projects, and that concludes my manager's report for the day.
Thank you, Chancellor. I'll go ahead and board comments. I'll start with Commissioner Scololo.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to see happy faces in the crowd today. We got some officers, we're gonna be swearing in. It's a good evening. This is my last ugly sweater for the year, so you will not be wearing any more tacky ever sweater. Yeah, yeah, Christmas is coming, it's gonna be a good, good new year, so that's all.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lake?
Thank you, Mayor. I felt it was wonderful for the parade last weekend. I've been sitting up here for twenty-six years, and that's the biggest and best that I've ever seen. And I want to congratulate the town staff and the Pride of Michigan people who are behind this, just keep up the good work, it's a great job. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lake.
Merry Christmas.
Commissioner Braver?
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to welcome Jason Kennedy back. It's nice to have a reporter with us tonight with C D U. And the parade was wonderful. I enjoyed riding in it and even got my younger daughter who just paid me to drive this, and I think she had a good time too. But Merry Christmas, doll Iby, I guess this is her making for the end of the year. So Merry Christmas and a wonderful New Year, doll Iby.
Thank you, Commissioner Braver. Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. Kenwan McCray.
I hate that I missed everything, but I saw the pictures online, it looks just wonderful. And I too would just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and that's all, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. McCray. You look back into where we've come a year ago this month, and you can look at this one document and look at all the accomplishments that we've done together in this town. Has it been one of us? It's been all of us. Look at the amount of staff, new staff people that the town has hired in this past year. A new human resources director, deputy, a new deputy human resources director, a new planning director, that should be planning an economic, new town planner, new fire chief, new deputy fire chief. That's a lot of senior leadership that have come in during this past year. And then, of course, in February, we had the official swearing in of our town manager removing that title in from him, and now he is the town manager. And this is, this entire list that you see on this page is a reflection of the vision and the passion that we as a town believe in and strive for. This Christmas parade, like Commissioner Lake said, it was long, and it was well-attended, and the comments were so positive from everybody that was out there on a cold night, they know what snake it was. It was a chilly night, but when you, but you, you have to take that crowd moment at that part and in the tree lighting and listen to what people say about our town. We have so much character in this town, we truly, truly do. Just about every day, somebody is thanking us for something that we have contributed to the community. And one of those is the repaving of Diver Circle. That one, you wouldn't believe it, but that one piece of road is like gold to the over two thousand people that use that street to leave their homes and come back every day. I'll tell you something else that happened just this past weekend. We have a theater production here in Hope Mills called Marge's Village. They've been performing down at the chapel. This past weekend, they performed live a play called It's a Wonderful Life, and they kicked it off on Thursday night into Friday. I was there Saturday night with the closing matinee on Sunday. And I will tell you that the community came out and supported every one of these engagements. Friday night, they were pretty full. Thursday night, they were pretty full. Over, well, it was over forty-five people that were there, all the seats, all the seats were just about filled for every one of these. What does that say? It says, "We are the arts," and it says, "Our community appreciates the arts," and it, and it appreciates some live theater because these actors and actresses, they really performed well. And it was over here in the rec center. And it's something to build on as part of our community going forward. That is what it says. That's the message that it says. Something else we took on this year, and we just talked about this earlier today, was we took on the, the school resource officers and the traffic control officers. That was a big mission for us in this past year with very little notice, and I do mean very little. We adopted a budget, and about a week later, we got a letter, and then we had to put a plan in place in two months to get our, to keep our schools safe for the coming school year. And I will tell you that you hear so much from parents. I heard it at the Christmas parade, I heard it at the tree lighting ceremony, thanking us for what we did to protect our schools, to protect the kids in those schools, and to protect the staff and the teachers who work in those schools, and to provide traffic direction on our very busy crowded roads, that we took that on, and we did it admirably. We really did. And that's a testament to a lot of folks, to Donalde's work behind the scenes, and he was very diligent and worked hard on, on doing that. But we did it together as a town, and we did it together as a board. The folks of our community elected this board to represent them, and we have done that well in this past year. And our report card shows exactly what we've done in one year. It'll be longer than this next year, I'm telling you now. Chancellor already knows it's gonna be a front and a back for next year. We've already started on some things, and one of them is that you'll hear tonight's presentation. That's all I have. We're gonna get into the next part, which is the swearing in. Hope Mills Police Officers, hope I get these names right. Jarvis James, Stephen Kelly, and, oh, no, I'm not, I know I'm not gonna get this one right. Chief, I'm not gonna get this name right.
Marisol Crusen.
Marisol?
Crusen.
Marisol, is it Crusen? Crusen, same. Okay, I know I wasn't gonna get it, and I mean, no disrespect, I'm not good with things. Go ahead, Chief.
So we'll start off with Marisol. She was born and raised in California. She joined the Army in two thousand and eleven, transitioned into the reserves in two thousand and twenty-one, and currently still serving. She currently is working towards her bachelor's degree in criminal justice. She has three years in law enforcement, and she comes from us from the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department. Next one, Jarvis James. Jarvis started with Hope Mills, actually, in two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and nineteen, and he left, he's, he's back, and he comes from us, comes to us from the Bligham County Sheriff's Office, and he has six years of law enforcement experience. And then finally, Stephen Kelly was born in Laurinburg, North Carolina. He spent twelve years in the military, five years at Cumberland County Sheriff's Office, and he comes to us from there as well. Marisol's friend Kevin is here to hold her Bible. Jarvis is flying solo tonight, he's traveling light, so we'll help him out with the Bible. And then, and then Stephen has his mom, his dad, and his aunt, and his wife here to, to help him out. I'm coming down.
Any family with a good Bible, is that your thing?
Yeah, more than one Bible or no?
No.
Everybody will share, but make all.
We got three. That's one of the bottles? There you go. All right. I'm gonna start it off, and when I say state your name, look into view of the state name, okay? Then when I get down to state your position, look into view of the state name, right there. All right there. I am state unit.
Jarvis James.
You solemnly swear? That I will be alert and vigilant, to enforce criminal laws of this state, and I will not be influenced in any manner or account of bias or prejudice that I will support and maintain, and the laws of the United States, and the Constitution, and the laws, say the North Carolina State, not inconsistent their way, and that I will obey and impart the discharge of the duties of my office, as a law enforcement officer has a state position. For town of Hope Mills, according to the best of my skill, self-ease, and judgment. So help me God. All right. I learned that. Yes, I learned that quite well. Okay, now we got a picture.
Maybe the officers never do the cameras, is that good?
Whatever, yes, whatever you want, it is. Good, hey now, individual families, is that good? I mean, I, I've got families, you gotta, you gotta be in this picture. Family's gotta be in this picture. Kelly. Congratulations. All right, we're good. You know, in the military, we say, military members are recognized with their families. Military members are promoted, and when they are, they're always with their men, and they're recognized. Thank you. And Merry Christmas. Oh, yeah, that's right. My next presentation is North Carolina Center for Economic empowerment and Development presentation. Welcome. Thanks for being patient with us and coming a little bit later than, than last month.
It worked out perfectly.
We appreciate it.
They always do. So thank you for having me, thank you for giving me the opportunity to discuss the organization and what we do and how that can impact the community of Hope Mills also. So my name is Dani Slenden, I am a program director at C D, which is the Center for Economic Empowerment and Development. Just a little bit about us, so I think we're sometimes the best kept secret in town. So we've been there since nineteen ninety. It was started by Sylvia Ray. Some are, some are with me old enough to recall, but back in nineteen ninety, the reason it started is there was a shift in societal norms, there was a shift in families, right? And so what we started to see, or what Sylvia started to see, was that there were a lot of women who now had stayed home, had raised their family. There was an increase in divorce at that time for midlife divorces. So we had a lot of women who now were, did not have the resources or the income sources to sustain themselves. And so Sylvia wanted to create a center and an organization that helped women make the connections to the community and to the resources in it. And so that's what we've done for a very long time. About twenty-five years ago, one of the programs that she brought in was the Women's Business Center. We are actually the first women's business center in North Carolina. That is an S B A grant program that provides entrepreneurship training to women and men. So it is an S B A, it's a federal program, there is not a discriminatory factor. We have an emphasis on women, we're not exclusive to women. And so that's what we do, it's how we started. We have a small business seed, has a small business loan program too, so for startup or entrepreneurs, we have, it's a small one though. Now we have the Women's Business Center and the other program that we now have, thanks to a grant from the Women's Giving Circle last year, is we have a financial literacy academy. And so just some pieces about that, I did, she did. So I'll start with the Women's Business Center. That is the program that I am the director of, so I have been there just about three years now. And so our mission is to provide small business economic development in North Carolina for business services, for startups and expansion of small businesses, especially for those that are socially and economically disadvantaged. Our different programs, we have one-on-one counseling, so we can help you, we have business plan development, we offer credit and loan counseling. I happen to be a retired banker, and one of the other counselors is also a retired banker, so we're very good at credit and loan counseling and financial projections. We both, between us, have almost fifty years just of experience in helping with that, to the point that one of the other S B A programs actually sends their clients, when they have financials, to our office to have them help project them out for them in the financial projection. We have on-demand courses, we have workshops and trainings. Last year, we did over a hundred and, I think about a hundred and twenty-four workshops just alone. We have, so some of them are online, they're also in person. There was big news today, so we've been doing lunch and learns all year, so every month I have a subject matter expert come in, they provide lunch, we put a room of fifteen to twenty entrepreneurs in the room. We keep it small to make sure there is that one-on-one and people have a connection to it. And we were asked by the Fayetteville Chamber of Commerce to partner with them. And so starting in twenty twenty-five, there will actually be, we will kick off with a partnership for the lunch and learns. There will be the first and third Wednesday, and it will be in partnership, we'll work together to bring in subject matter experts to entrepreneurs. That program, that's, that's available, I mean, I, we serve eleven counties, so, and all the towns, and that was part of why coming out to Hope Mills today was to make that connection too, because while we share a property line, right, we, we feel very differently about our towns and our spaces. I manage a bank in Spring Lake, and I understand there's that, we're all connected, but we're, but we're individual, right? And so those are things that we can bring to Hope Mills too. I'm more than willing to work with someone to, to bring those different events to, to Hope Mills also. The online trainings obviously are available for anyone at any time. We have a business development course, business plan development, because for entrepreneurs, that business plan is key and fundamental, and so we offer that, that's an online course. But any of the programs, the Hope Mills, any, anyone in the eleven counties is welcome to attend, but I'm also willing to go out and specialize to certain areas to make it unique to that town too. So all of these things can be brought, you can share what we have, or we can bring them individually this way, however you'd like to do that. But our classes are on marketing, we have accounting courses or bookkeeping stuff. We have, we, I do a resource day, we're about three times a year. I've used Fayetteville State, but we have a place, I basically bring subject matter experts, seventeen of them, in and let small business owners speed network through them and get connections to all of the resource partners that are needed to operate their business. Because what I learned years ago, and I think everyone can, you know, vouch for that, is that what business owners don't have is time. So what I do is I bring them all to you and let you have those conversations and gain that knowledge from them. Even if you have a bank account, talking to the banker, you don't know what you don't know, you don't know what they can help you with, or the insurance agent that might be there that day, she may know something or be able to help you with things. So I think it's really just about, what we really want to be is that resource that connects you, that connects the community, connects the resources in the community, and connects those entrepreneurs. That's really what it's about in helping. For the most part, our, well, our counseling is free. There is no charge for any of the counseling. For our courses, I usually have a nominal fee, but if that's a hindrance for someone, that can be adjusted. But we, I will tell you that the nominal fee is really because it helps with attendance. And that way I can better plan for who's gonna be in attendance that day and prepare for it. And then the last program that we have right now, again, through a Women's Giving Circle program, what we know is that financial literacy is probably one of the largest problems we have in our society, not just for small business owners, but for society, all of, the whole population. Only a third of our nation is actually financially literate, and so that, there's a whole lot of room then for growth. And so we were fortunate, we have a branded program now where we can do financial literacy training on about any topic. What we don't do usually is an investment because that requires licensing, and I really don't, I, I stay away from that. But right now, I have a partnership with the Cumberland County Libraries, and so each month we go to a library and we do a training, so we have it from debt to Um, so, we have it from debt to credit to mindset to saving. But this program is also online. So, if you attend one of our trainings, I then give you access and license to the entire financial literacy program that's out there. But we do then offer workshops that are available throughout and to do that. And so, just a little bit about last, in two thousand twenty-three, I don't have twenty-four numbers yet. I'm sure they'll be pretty similar. We served over twenty-nine hundred clients between counseling and education and training. We serve, again, eleven counties. We had helped people access over one point six million dollars in capital for small business entrepreneurs. Fifty-five percent of our clients are low-income. Seventy-three percent have a military affiliation. And seventy-six percent are minority. And seventy-seven percent were women. Which means twenty-three percent are served, and the Women's Business Center are male. Um, and so, those are the programs that we offer. Um, and they are available to the community, like I said, mostly for low-cost or very, very low-cost. And because we serve, our, our target is that socially, economically disadvantaged community. Anytime the money is a factor, that can always be adjusted, and we can look at that for them. I don't ever want that to be a hindrance. There's our contact information. So, if anyone would ever like to reach out, I would be more than happy to help anyone and, and do anything we can.
Okay. You mentioned that you go to the libraries. Do you come to the Hope Mills Library?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's good. Because I know that we have a, a Hope Mills Chamber of Commerce that would really enjoy a partnership, and I think that's something to explore.
We'd love that. We do, the library, we've done the financial literacy. Again, that's, we do in the rotation through the year to each Cumberland County Library. So, we've been out. And then, we also have one of our business plan development courses that we're going to be doing in Hope Mills too. Um, I can't remember which one. Like, my whole calendar for next year is already almost spread out, so I don't remember. But we're coming back out again.
We would like to, you know, we would advertise that if you were to share, you know, when those dates are and when those times are. Our liaison on the board is Commissioner Schoala for the Hope Mills Chamber. I'm sure she has some comments as well.
Okay. Yeah, I do have some questions. Do you, like, on your website, is there, like, a calendar when you do these, like, workshops and everything?
Yes, all of our trainings will be on our calendar. Oh, wait. And we have on-demand trainings too. And so, those will be on there. You could access all that too.
Okay. I'll definitely be sharing this with the Hope Mills Chamber Board. So, we'll definitely be in contact with you.
Absolutely. I would, I would welcome the opportunity.
Actually, let me give you one of my parts too, just in case.
Okay.
For mine?
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's really about, we can serve on a board together. Really, why you not tell me about her, huh? But, but, why, why?
Hold it back.
Now, I, I, I will, I'll vouch for, because usually, that conversation, that's the armed forces YMCA board, and we're always so busy. We don't have time for other stuff. We're all focused on that part while we're on that call.
I understand. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all. And Merry Christmas.
Before you leave, is there any other comments for the board? Mayor Portman, Dr. McCray?
Chuck Hewitt.
Okay. All right, we thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next item up on the presentations is a huge one. We're talking about our audit presentation. Finance Director Drew Holland has it, along with our auditor and insurers. Board members, you should have a, uh, presentation copy of the audit.
One of those like that.
The audit, uh, what's will be passed down as well? Mayor Portman, Dr. McCray, what had yours, uh, separate?
I emailed it to her.
I did. Okay, you already got it.
So, she does it with her. Okay. Um, again, thanks for this opportunity tonight. Uh, Jay Sharp is here from, um, the company that does our town audit. This is year two of them doing our annual audit. And he's going to share with you some information. And after he's finished, then, um, I'll, uh, got a few things to share with you as well. So, come here.
Great. Uh, thank you for having me out tonight. Uh, my name is Jay Sharp. I'm the audit partner in charge of the town's audit for two thousand twenty-four. Uh, so, do you have a short presentation to go through? Uh, now, we've got to take any questions you may have. Uh, so, I just want to start out with the status of the audit. Uh, the upfield work has been completed, and the financial statements have been prepared, and the audit has been submitted to the local government commission. Uh, we're just waiting on their final approval, and then we will issue the audit for two thousand twenty-four. A little background on what we do as auditors. Um, one of the first things we do is start planning the audit. Uh, we gain an understanding of internal controls at the town. Uh, we may test some of those controls. Uh, for two thousand twenty-four, we tested three areas. Uh, controls of the cash disbursements, of the payroll, and of our credit cards. And we do this because we have a risk-based audit approach. And what we're doing is assessing risks for all the significant financial reporting areas the town has. Cash, revenues, expenditures. Um, and we concentrate our audit efforts in the higher-risk areas, but we do look at every significant financial reporting area the town has. And the risk assessment kind of gives us a roadmap on how we're going to conduct the audit on an annual basis. Um, because as auditors, we have to perform hard procedures to obtain what we consider to be sufficient audit evidence to render an opinion on the financial statement. That's why you hire us, to give an opinion. And that opinion concentrates to whether the financial statements are materially correct. So, the results of the two thousand twenty-four audit. I think you'll be pleased with this. Uh, scope and the timing of the audit, we're on track. No issues there. Uh, the audit opinion that we were just talking about. Once again, the town received an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean audit opinion, or the best possible audit, uh, audit opinion you can receive. So, good news there. Uh, happy report, there were no findings or recommendations for two thousand twenty-four. Uh, so, during our audit, when we look at internal controls, we know any issues. We're required to report those. No findings for two thousand twenty-four. So, good news there. Uh, in addition to the audit, uh, we issued a separate letter called a communications letter. Uh, there's four main talking points to this letter. Uh, the first one is any significant changes in accounting policies that were beyond two thousand twenty-four. Uh, one area you pay close attention to during the audit are estimates. Uh, these are numbers redraw from estimates from management. Uh, your two key estimates are the reasonable lives of your capital assets and the allowance for doubtful accounts. Those estimates appear reasonable. No issues there. Uh, happy report, no disagreements with management, and no difficulties encountered during the audit process. We appreciate the complete cooperation we had from all the town staff. Drew and all of staff gave us everything timely and efficiently. All right, to end the presentation, I'll go through the numbers for two thousand twenty-four. Uh, the first one is a trend analysis. Uh, this is your revenues and expenses for your general fund. Uh, this goes back to two thousand nineteen. But the red represents revenues, the blue represents expenditures. Uh, each of the last three years, the town has a surplus. For two thousand twenty-four, your revenues were almost seventeen point seven million dollars. Uh, your expenditures, uh, seventeen point four million dollars. So, you had about two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus for two thousand twenty-four. Uh, good news there for the town. Uh, the financial health of your town can be shown on this next graph. This is the fund balance that the town has at the end of each of the year. This goes back to two thousand eighteen. Um, if you look at two thousand twenty, your fund balance was about seven point three million dollars. Each of the last several years, your fund balance is going up. At the end of two thousand twenty-four, your fund balance is at nine point five million dollars. So, you've seen well over a two million dollar increase in your fund balance every last several years. Shows that the town's been fiscal responsible and has a healthy fund balance at the end of the year. This is represented in the next, uh, graph. So, fund balance is made up of different components. Uh, the three major ones here, uh, the, uh, orange is assigned fund balance, capital projects. Uh, the red is restricted fund balance. Uh, your two major restrictions are power funds, which are used for your streets, and they're restricted by state statute. Those are funds that are receivable at year end. You've now received them, so since you've now received them, you can't use them to actually get those funds in place. But the most important one is that gray one. That's unassigned fund balance. Uh, for two thousand twenty-four, your unassigned fund balance was six point six million dollars. And what that's important is, because that's reused for the town. Uh, what we do here is we compare that to your prior year expenditures. Um, that represented thirty-eight percent of your expenditures. Uh, anything over eight percent is considered healthy. Anywhere in thirty to forty percent of the range is really healthy. So, that shows that you have a really healthy unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. It's kind of going to be shown again. Look at your cash reserves. Uh, we're looking at your unrestricted cash compared to your prior year expenditures. How long does the town, the team you're operating, do you receive more cash inflows? We generally recommend three to six months of healthy cash reserves. Uh, your number actually went up in two thousand twenty-four. Uh, two thousand twenty-three is a hundred and forty days. Two thousand twenty-four is a hundred and seventy-seven days. Uh, so, you have happy years of cash reserves and plus. Shows that the town's fiscal transparent once again, and very physically healthy at the end of two thousand twenty-four. Couple of revenue analysis here. Uh, look at your property tax revenues. Uh, your property tax revenues have gone up each of the last several years. Uh, back in two thousand nineteen, it was five point four million dollars. At the end of two thousand twenty-four, it was six point one million dollars, almost six point two. Um, how, despite that, on your next graph, your property tax rates remain constant, stable since two thousand nineteen. Uh, so, your revenues have gone up, and your rates have not gone up. And the final graph before taking any, uh, questions is how you spent your money in two thousand twenty-four. Uh, this is very consistent with last year. Uh, not compared to last year's percentages, and they're almost identical. Uh, so, the largest piece of the pie continues to be public safety. Forty-nine percent of the total expenditures went toward public safety. Fourteen percent went toward transportation. Uh, nineteen percent went toward general governance. And then, you have some miscellaneous smaller amounts. But as I said, this is kind of identical compared to two thousand twenty-three. Uh, so, your town's very consistent in the way it spends its money. Um, but that kind of reiterates, clean audit opinion, no findings, and everything indicates that the town is financially healthy at the end of two thousand twenty-four. Uh, with that, I've got to take any questions you have on the audit procedures, the results of the audits, or the numbers themselves.
Okay. Thank you very much. Looks like we've got a very healthy scorecard that reflects a lot of hard work from our finance department and a lot of weigh-in from all of our town department heads. And the steward of the management of the town has really been solid, especially in the last couple of years. I mean, I, since I've been on the board, I think this is one of the best positions that the town has been in as far as budget in, in years. And that's a pretty doggone good thing to shout about from the rooftops is when you've got something that's very clean, uh, no findings, and the town is very healthy. With that, I'll ask the board, is there any comments from any board members? Done? Done? Mayor Portman, Dr. McCray?
No, I think Jay is very impressive, very good for the town.
Thank you very much. Okay. Like I said, this is a true reflection of the dedicated work that our, that our staff in the finance department, led by Drew Holland. There's no doubt about it that when you look at an audit like this, and I'm, I'm so glad that you got to do it for us and see all the hard work that they put into, to our budget and looking over the numbers every day, because it is an ongoing process. So, we thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Drew, you have anything?
I did. Just to, uh, let you know what, what you've got here in your hands. Uh, this is the audit report. As, uh, Jay said earlier, it is waiting for approval for a local government commission. So, until it's approved by the local government commission, it's not necessarily a public document at this time. Once it's approved by LGC, they can put it on the town's website and that sort of thing. So, it's kind of still considered draft until they, uh, have their final approval. But what you do have in the document here, um, it is a lot of numbers. But if you'd like to, um, add some information, um, to glean from the statements, one of the best things to review would be, starting on page eleven, you have the management discussion and analysis. It's a few pages of just general information about the town and focuses on some of the numbers, uh, brought out in the statements. Uh, starting on page twenty-six, you have what's called the notes to the financial statements. It's, uh, twenty-some-odd pages of a lot of information. But if you're interested in that information, the notes really explain what a lot of the numbers are and where the numbers come from. And the most interesting information, I think in your book, that our town manager likes a lot, is in the back, start on page seventy-five, is the statistical section. It gives you a ten-year snapshot of a lot of different statistical information from the document for the last ten years. It's got the current year and the previous nine. So, it kind of shows you where we've come from and how things have changed over the last ten years. So, um, and one thing I noticed you've seen the manager highlight before is our top ten taxpayers on page eighty-three, where most of our tax dollars come from. And it shows you where they're coming from as of June thirtieth of twenty-four and where they came from ten years ago. And some of them are the same companies today. So, if you have any questions about the audit report itself, send me an email, give me a call, let me know. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank my staff, um, Erica Hancock, Ricky Bailey, and Kelly Wall. I couldn't do this without them. And also, the help of the department heads, the town manager, and everything that they do to, um, make everything work financially for the town.
All right, Drew, just one question. This report was what was submitted to the LGC?
Yes. It happened now. And then, as Jay said, we'll probably hear from them tomorrow that it's been approved.
Tomorrow morning. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Drew. All right, next up is public comments. Okay. We have three citizens signed up for tonight. I'm just reminding each citizen of the three-minute rule. That as I call your name, state your name, address, and you have three minutes to discuss your topic. And the first one is Karen Sarerson. Sarerson. See, I get it wrong every time.
My name is Karen Smith Sarerson. My address is fifty-five thirty-two Rising Ridge Drive, Hope Mills, North Carolina, two eight three four eight. Um, I'm here today, um, to talk about an event that I was made aware of, um, at work today. Um, I work for the federal government as a nurse at the VA, so I am not speaking on behalf of the VA whatsoever. I want to make that disclaimer. I'm speaking as a private citizen. Um, there is going to be a off-road outreach annual day of giving, serving homeless and at-risk veterans with backpacks and gear, haircuts, clothing, shoes, and medical screening and more. Um, as a nurse, I would be, I'm going to be doing medical screenings for tuberculosis, COVID, flu, and collecting, so, we have, there's veterans out there who are homeless, who still don't have their DD two fourteen. So, that's, that'll be my role. But, uh, the reason I'm bringing it back to the town, when I got it, I, I actually called Brilly Mitchell, the expert matter of homeless in Hope Mills. And he was, he already knew about it. And, um, he said, why don't you call Chancer and see if we can bring it to the town where we can participate in it? It's Monday, January sixth, from eleven AM to two PM at Operation Inasmuch in Fayetteville. Even though that it's not in Hope Mills, I think as a citizen and volunteering with the Second Harvest Food Bank with food distribution, this is a good opportunity for the town of Hope Mills to also share in protecting citizens who are, um, at risk for homelessness in the Cumberland County area. And I know we're trying to build our homeless committee, and I think this would be a wonderful way to get involved and even network with other homeless, uh, programs that are in Cumberland County. How much, I got forty-eight, thirty-eight seconds left? Let me see. I don't have any power points. I don't have any planned speeches. I think that's it.
Okay. Got one question? Miss Schoala?
Do you have a copy of that card? You can have mine.
Town manager, can we get copies of that?
Yeah, I have copies of it. I will add to that, that, um, just in my personal, uh, life, I do routinely volunteer at Operation Inasmuch in the soup kitchen, uh, in the morning. And, um, so, it is a very well-run program. Uh, I do think that it's something that we could benefit from developing a relationship with that organization.
Thank you very much. You there? Coming? Okay. Next is former Commissioner Brilly Mitchell.
I'm not the dentist.
And thank you for, uh, thank you for the opening invitation, by all.
No pleasure. Brilly Mitchell, four zero five six William Miller Drive, here in Hope Mills. I want to speak to everybody that called Hope Mills home. And I want to talk about miscommunication and misinformation. We have elected officials. We have elected officials, we have town staff, and I call the town staff our subject matter experts. Do not listen to individuals that are high behind websites and on Facebook and those places, because anybody can put out information that is erroneous. You want the right information, go to your town experts, your town manager. Because as an elected official, that's who we go to to get that information. We share with them, we say researches, so we can get back with citizens. What I'm saying to you is, if you want the correct information, when you talk about the roads and who owns what, who does what, the responsibility, accountability, you have a town that does that. What's been built, what's not been built, what's been torn down, you have a town staff that does that. Contact them, get the information from them. There's a lot of things I don't normally chat, uh, chat on or talk about because I look at, read it. I say, why the hell did that not happen? Excuse me. But it's misinformation. I will call the town manager, hey, did you see this, did you hear about this? Let's get in front of it. Our police department, they know about the sirens. They, they know what fire was on fire. They know who's been incarcerated, what the case may be. Stop listening to the garbage. It's only going to get worse in 2025 because it's sloping into the time. And they can do anything and everything they can to destroy people's credibility. Don't listen. Go to the individual. Couple of years ago, somebody said that I didn't like cops. What they don't understand is I come from a family of cops. I support the police department, fire department, 100% because I love what they do. They protect me, they protect my family, they protect you. Don't listen to what these people tell you, because when they tell you that, it takes three things to start a fire. Fuel, heat, and oxygen. Take three things to start a community fire. Lies, miscommunication, lack of communication. Don't listen, don't do it, and you will find yourself living in a community that loves you and you will love them back. Thank you.
Thank you, Brilly. Our last speaker is someone who has long served on numerous committees in our town and continues to serve, and that would be Sally Bailey.
Good evening, I'm Sally Bailey, 5857 Henry Ray, Hope Mills. Good evening, commissioners, or should I say, and mayor? Should I say Mary Preston, this is her. I hope everybody's ready. Okay, let's talk about unkept painting, all right? We're going to talk about tonight, tonight about how wonderful things are going in. I'm so proud, okay? So proud to be a part of this, okay? And yes, I did take my taxes, all right? To anyone who puts in the money in. So let's talk about our town's kind of unkept, all right? We can do better. We have done better. I have seen this town, I've been here too many years, and I have seen in my town where we did not have what we have now, and we look better. I'm talking about sidewalks. I'm talking about sidewalks down on 59. Lord, we're doing the sidewalks so bad, and now we've got them. I think edges have a leaky point. I know that's called the state, that at one time you could go in with the state and you could do the work or have the work done, and then you were being reversed by the state. So how can we get rid of sidewalks, all right? Look at the ones in front of our town, all down Hope Mills Drive, okay? Chica lady, they do. Look at Bojangles, look on that time. Look how those kids, well, Bojangles don't have any different time. Look at how all the others on that time. Key, the sidewalks, edge blown off, spray, weeds, everything. And then we come down a little bit farther, and no one keeps it from. We need to talk about making sure that these people build a broad property. And I'm talking around during Main Street over here, up above Tully Sees, up off the carpet and stuff, they clean it up only when you demand it, okay? And I think you do it twice a year, it needs to be done more than that. This is Main Street. People are coming through this part and they're seeing what we are. Let me tell you about Dove Drive, okay? I live off the Dove Drive on Henry Ray Drive. The median there, I keep getting them a call with fire department, the police department, and say, can you please come out and bring a car? And I'll bring out my, all my yard stuff and I will clean this up. There's weeds going there, there's trash, but the weed, I mean, we never did this before. Let's talk about Walgreen, I'm going to call out numbers. Are we responsible for the edging and the siding on beside Walgreen that comes down on 59? Or is that their responsibility to take care of the landscape? We need to know, because it's pathetic. What shrubs and stuff they have, it's dead. Looks like some of the trees are dead. There's a couple of them there on the horizon, on the horizon, and I'm like, I think the tree is dead. It doesn't grow, it doesn't do anything. Why don't you take it down? And I am not for that reason. So anyway, that's about it. That's what I'm going to do anyway. I think y'all said, like, you have a question.
I have the same question, too, I'm just going to ask it. Who's responsible for cutting that hill at Walgreen on 59?
I'll probably say it's a combination of DOT and the property owner. We have been, and you'll see this evening with that post aboard there, we have had made a lot of strides in strengthening code enforcement since we've hired our new town planner. But I will say that as we move forward, trying to more aggressively approach commercial code enforcement with grants, that you'll see a request for a third code enforcement officer in the budget for next year. I do know that most of the roads, if not all of the roads that Mrs. Bailey did mention were DOT roadways. So if you're talking about the right-of-way on those roadways, that typically does follow in the perp of DOT. We have explored the program where we would actually do a cut for DOT, do a program they have, and we found out that it's actually something that would cost the town more money if you were to look into what you have to do. So it's not just as easy as you're saying, hey, Don, go out and cut it, and DOT reverses us. You have to have traffic control, you have to have all these other things. And when you start factoring that into it, we actually lose money by doing that. That doesn't mean we're not going to explore it. We are trying to get more creative at what we can do on the roadways. There are major thoroughfares in the town that we don't maintain. But asking DOT to come out once every six months, they're going to cut it. Because in the summertime, that does get pretty exciting. So we are looking through, exploring multiple avenues to see if we can get the property owners to cut as well as code they would be able to.
I appreciate that, Chancellor, because I tell you, what that Walgreen's property, they will cut down to the corner. That, that one piece at the very top of the hill as you're coming up, right there at that corner on the right, is kept nice. But the rest of that cliff, like Sally said, it is, it's dead, it's, it's full of trash, it's full of weeds, and it just sets there.
I want to, I want to point something out. New business item B, which would be presented by code enforcement, is titled, Approval of Proposed Orifice Adoption of Right-of-Way Maintenance in General County. And so we are exploring a lot of those things. Because you do have areas where, I'm not going to call a business out, they'll cut the grass on the property, but won't cut at the curb. Now, it's your property until it's time for us to take a cut of the grass. And so what we're doing is we're getting out of the business of, let's try and lean. You're going to hear about some more creative things we're doing to put some teeth into code enforcement now. And so we do think that will help, but we're not going to put all our eggs in that one bag. So we are actually getting pretty grateful on trying to do some things that would strengthen our ability to more aggressively enforce the codes that are specifically tied to right-of-way.
Thank you, Chancellor. I know it's on the agenda tonight, and bless Sally that she brought it up. It's a source subject with me, and it's, and it's one of our gateway, our gateways into Hope Mills. But to see that cliff like that every day, I mean, I would think that Walgreen's, the business there, that they would want to take ownership of that and maintain it. I do remember some years ago where that was maintained. But it's been a while, it has been some time. Anyway, I'm going to move on. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there any item that a board member would like to move to new business? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
I have a, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Mayor Porton, Dr. McCray, she agrees. Seeing that no one opposed, the motion carries. Now we're moving into, we're into about the consent agenda, we're moving into old business, item A. Approve, approving the town manager to accept a proposal from Ashley Anderson and Sands Anderson Law Firm for the purposes of developing a comprehensive strategic plan. And Drew Holland's going to lead this off, and Ashley will be with him.
Okay, Drew. Okay. Few meetings ago, the town council directed the town manager and I to start the process of comprehensive strategic plan, with emphasis to bring back what we started. I think it was five or six years ago, a strategic plan that we had started before the pandemic. The pandemic got here, we put it on hold, and we never picked it back up again. So since we've been given this task, we have brought back Ashley Anderson. She's with a different attorney firm now, she's with Sands Anderson. And she's going to bring back, she's going to bring a proposal tonight and let y'all know what the plan is for our new comprehensive strategic plan.
Thank you, Drew, and welcome, Ashley.
Thank you, Drew. Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Some of you may remember me from several years ago. For those of you that don't, as we said, my name is Ashley Anderson, I'm an attorney with Sands Anderson. We are a law firm that represents municipalities in North Carolina and Virginia. In North Carolina, we work, as the saying goes, from Murphy to Manito, on a whole range of municipal issues. We're a full-service local government law firm, doing everything from town attorney work to bond counsel. So I have, you have check out before you tonight of a brochure or a proposal of sorts. Our website has the full list of services we offer. What you've got before you tonight highlights the things that I believe are relevant to the word strategic plan. To pick up where we left off five or six years ago, it's been a while. You know, I've been brought in to consult with you on creating a long-term comprehensive strategic plan. Our approach to strategic planning is broad and inclusive, it's deeply rooted in implementation. I want to leave you with a strategic plan that has your priorities, your goals, not mine, not another town's, but yours. It'll be very heavily engaged with staff, the board, your citizens, different parts of your community, to create something that is representative of Hope Mills and your vision for the future. But it doesn't stop there, some, some plans do, this one should not. I want to create, I hope y'all prioritize your goals, create action steps so you can turn your priorities into reality. We estimate that this usually takes about six to nine months. It is very driven on how much engagement we get. If you dedicate a certain time for community engagement and you don't receive an appropriate response, you need to do more engagement. So that, we estimate six to nine months. I've already talked to staff a little bit, if we are engaged and how to hit the ground running in January to get you some framework by the State of the Town address in May. We would propose building the town for hours worked on the project. Given the comprehensive nature of the plan, we would estimate a range of total fees, $65,000 to $85,000. Could go up a little bit, could go down. Again, we would just build based on hours worked. There's more, much more information in the brochure about the strategic plan, what it covers. It also highlights our economic development experience as well as our public finance experience. I know you already have a bond counsel, but it is helpful when you are identifying goals and priorities to understand the different ways to finance those projects. You have any questions for me?
Okay. Before I ask the board any questions, I kind of want to bring some historical pieces up. And like I said, welcome back, Ashlyn. In 2018, I was part of my first time as a board, as a commissioner on board. When we came in, in 18, myself, Mayor Porton, Mike Mitchell, Commissioner Meg Larson, Commissioner Jerry Lay, Commissioner Pat Edwards, and Mayor Jackie Warner was the mayor at the time, we realized in 2018 that this town, as much as we were growing in 18 and then looking at future growth over the next five to 10 years, we needed to develop a comprehensive strategic plan. And Ashley, you came in, guaranteed budget retreat, and briefed us on starting that plan. And I wanted to give credit to that board because we, we looked at it, we knew it was a need then. And then we got to COVID and we put it on pause. Then several elections occurred too, so many of us cycled off. But here we are again in 2024. And Commissioner Craver asked something last meeting about what we could, what we brought back from Tampa. And I will tell you, Commissioner Craver, that during the mayor's conference that I attended to, two and a half hours in Tampa, and that was the National League of Cities, this one document is gold to a lot of towns, a lot of cities. And, and I heard many of them paying consultants and the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and the return on the investment was huge. That it was a living document, a working document, that is used to look at the current needs, the future needs, the vision, the mission, and grants. And if you don't have a working document, I've heard this so many times, you need to get one. And these were best practices from mayors across the United States that was in a room and sharing best practices. And the one comment that I shared with the mayors there, that, that is something that we're working on, it was something, one of the initiatives that I came in as mayor, and Chancellor knows this along with the board, was to start the, the process again. We hear it on economic development. I heard it down in Wilmington at the National League, at the mayor's conference in Wilmington, where there was over 100 mayors from across North Carolina, talking about the, this one document and how this document is the compass for the future of the community in which it represents. And it's not one opinion from one person, it is a collective driven by community engagement. Driven by community engagement. Not the members of this board, not all the staff sitting in this room, not the town manager, but one. And that's the document that we're looking at tonight. And that's why it's so important, I just kind of wanted to bring some historical pieces up to it. I do believe that there was something that was drafted up maybe a few years ago. But there's nothing like what's, what the focus, focus and the scope of what this document is going to look like. And I, and actually I could say that I wish COVID hadn't gotten away because we would have this document today, we would be using this document today. So that's a little bit from me. Is there any comments from the board? And I'll start with Commissioner Swol.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, I have a question, kind of a question, comment. I'm going to ask, since, since you deal with this quite regularly, I'm assuming. I'm going to ask the question, I'm going to get beat up for it. Do you have, do you notice an issue with doing it with committees, boards that have two-year terms as far as developing strategic plans?
So the strategic plan is intended to be a long-range comprehensive document. It is not something that you want to redo every two years. Ideally, you'd want it to be something that stays with the board, but certainly, you know, when you do have force to turn over every two years, the vision changes with every new board. That may be something we discuss as part of a strategic initiative.
And that's why, that's why I figured you would come across that and had to ask, I had to address the elephant in the room, and thank you. That was my question.
Commissioner Swol. I heard that very same topic, I heard it in Tampa, I heard it in Wilmington. I've heard it in various settings in the past year. It's all the same thing about consistency of, of boards. Commissioner Lay, you have anything?
Yes, I do. I can't eat. What I'm wondering about is how have the fees for this change? We haven't a company over here that we pay. Of course he's qualified to do that kind of study or not. I don't know, but I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask.
It's not really what I do, I don't really do comprehensive study.
Commissioner Lay, you're the town attorney, she is a subject matter expert in strategic planning.
Okay. I'll tell it then. I just, that question popped in my mind the afternoon.
You do not have to be an attorney to do strategic planning. I think there is some benefit in it, especially for attorneys that work in local government. Unfortunately, I can wear, I can wear many hats, but unfortunately, I cannot take off my attorney hat. So I do have to be very upfront that while I will not be working in the traditional town attorney role, I, I am an attorney that will be doing this work for you, so you choose to hire me.
Thank you very much.
And Commissioner Lay, you know from eighteen when we served together, you know, we vetted her credentials and she was a subject matter expert then, we hired her then. She was part of the gateway plan that kicked off here in Oak Mills. And then COVID came and put everything on hold and paused, but she's back. We're lucky to have her back. Mayor Protown? Mayor Protown Dr. McCray, you have any comments or questions?
No, I mean, my confidence is that I feel like the strategic plan should be used when we have these initiatives that we come up with throughout the town as well. I think it should be used through every budgeting process. I was beat up in the media about the staggered four-year term, but I still stand on it. I do believe that we do need staggered four-year terms. And hopefully, the strategic, strategic plan once you create it, it might be some minor modifications, but not complete overhaul because of floor changes. Because to me, that's the only reason why you have a complete overhaul is if you have a floor change. But like I said, for budgeting and all of the initiatives that we do throughout the town, I think that we should have it to help keep us focused on our overall goal.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protown Dr. McCray. I want to add additional comments for talk to vote. I was waiting on Commissioner Craver to return. Is that like in parks and rec, master plans are key. And I learned that too in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, as we were starting to process inheritance park. When we were looking at a plan for a part of that, we were told, wait a minute, got to tap the brakes, got to have a master plan for your parks and rec activities. And that's all your cost, you didn't know that then. Well, the comprehensive strategic plan is needed as well. Because it touches so many functions, not only internally to the town, but externally to the town as well. And the value for this plan will definitely be a benefit for the town in future years as it looks and continues to grow economically and in residential growth as well. Well. I'm going to have to, Dan, I'm going to have to wait till Commissioner Craver returns just so I can ask for a motion.
I suppose, there's no harm in that. I think the forum was present at the beginning of the meeting, so we could.
Was it go ahead, Doug?
President, if you want to wait for her to get back.
Yeah, I will, I will wait till she comes back. Ashley, could you hang around with us for a few minutes until she returns?
I'm coming back for six years, so.
That's good, that's really good.
Ashley was working on this before, during the pandemic, you know, we were taking turns working from home. So I was at home working and, and we called and she was talking about how do we set up community engagement during COVID? And we were like, I don't, I don't know how you do that because you can't go anywhere, we can't be in groups. And we were talking about maybe an online survey or different things. And before we got to talking, I just thought, I tried to say, you know what, we're just going to have to put this thing on hold for a little while. And so we had a different manager then, so I called that manager and I said, we're going to have to put the strategic plan on hold until everything gets to some sort of normalcy. So we decided to do that and then we just never picked it back up again, so.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner Craver. We, we're waiting on you to give any comments about it?
No.
You good?
I'm good.
All right. Seeing no more comments, I'm going to ask them, I'm going to ask the motion to, to accept the proposal from Ashley Anderson and Sands Anderson Law Firm for the purposes of developing a comprehensive strategic plan within the budget range of sixty-five to eighty-five thousand. And that the town manager be allowed to execute the contract. That is the motion I would oppose. Mayor Protown?
I said don't move, it's someone else.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Mayor Protown votes, seeing no one opposed, the motion carries. Ashley, welcome back and we're going to have a nice partnership for, for the coming months. And hopefully, nothing will get in the way this time. And, yep, knock on, knock, knock on the gavel. Nothing will get in the way this time, we have to put it on pause. And somewhere in May, around the middle of May, we should be able to present the first draft of what this plan will look like for the town. And I'm excited, I truly, truly am excited.
Thank you so much, we'll hit the ground running in January and everybody have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. All right, next item is reapproval of the Code of Ethics for elected officials for the town of Oak Mills. It's under tab ten. I think everybody has a copy of it. We approved this Code of Ethics last year when we came in as a board. There's been some updates to it over the past year, but I wanted to make sure that each member of the board has had the opportunity to read over. It's a, it's a guiding compass for how we as a board are ethical to one another and to our community and to our town employees. You remember the last meeting, I talked greatly about investing in our community. Investing in each other and investing in our town employees who deliver services to our community every day. This is a document that we live by. It's our Code of Ethics, it's our general principles of what ethics is. That's what this document is. So, before I call for the vote, is there any discussion about it? Any board members? Mr. Sroll, nothing? Mr. Craver? Commissioner Lay? Mayor Protown Dr. Tim Wong-McCrave?
No.
Do I have a motion to reapprove Code, Code of Ethics for elected officials for the town of Oak Mills? Second? I have a motion to have a second, all in favor? Mayor Protown votes affirmative, motion carries. Each board member has an individual copy of the Code of Ethics that you'll, that you should be able to sign tonight. Mayor Protown has one at home and she'll sign it and deliver it back to the town. Moving on to new business. Item A, authorizing the town manager to execute a loan agreement and approve correspondent budget amendment number sixteen in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for installment financing for fire department radios, tab eleven. Chief, you want this one or is it going to be?
Be a combination.
It's going to be a tag team, got a pilot and a co-pilot. This is under tab eleven, board member, so there's a little bit of, a little bit of reading there. But I think Chief's going to present it. Where is Chief?
This is something we've been in need of for a while. We've had issues with our radios for several years now. The Kimlins we currently have don't communicate with some of the Motorola's, they're still having service. We've had issues on calls here recently. We were actually at a training exercise with federal fire department. We, we were assigned a channel to get on. Our radios were on that channel, theirs were as well. We were picking up Cumberland County Sheriff's Department training instead of fire training we were on. We actually had to borrow radios from FTC's engine out there at the training center to participate, finish in the training session. To me, that was kind of embarrassing and all of that is a life safety issue as well. If someone has something go wrong on a call and they're calling for help, we need to be able to hear them and we also need to be able to communicate back to them and they know that we hear their calls. If not, then bad things happen. I'm hoping for any questions?
All right, Chief, I'm going to add a little bit to this. Of course, I work for the college along with Mayor Protown Dr. Tim Wong-McCrave. And I'm proud to say that our college has the number one fire and slipwater safety facility in the entire eastern United States and we have it right here. Our, our retired, uh, previous fire chief works there during the day, Joe Cox. There's a lot of community support from different fire departments that work out there and train a number of firefighters with exercises that benefit Cumberland County, all nine municipalities and additional counties within the region that surround Cumberland County. This very issue was, I heard about it from you, Chief, and they, I followed up with the folks out there and technology has changed so much in the past three years, actually four years now, since those last radios were purchased. Tremendous amount of technology continues to change in communications. There's brand new radios out there that's being used and the, the signature part is Motorola. Everybody has Motorola because they work on the same receivers. Not only do the fire department radios work on the same receivers, but I think they also work in concert with our police department radios. Am I right? The radios that you're using now were purchased years, some years ago. And to keep up with technology, that's what fire departments and police departments are continuously having to do. But you also go to work with the rest of the company too. There's a reason why everybody in Cumberland County has Motorola except Oak Mills. There's a reason for it and it's one word. It starts with a Q. Anybody guess what that Q is? Quality. In business, you get what you pay for. And, and I, I say that, I, I teach that in my business classes at FTC. You get what you pay for. You want something that just works, well, okay. But if you want something that's going to be efficient and effective, especially when you're talking about the loss of property and/or life, radios have got to be able to communicate with each other and other departments. And I, I know this is a little bit of a price tag. But tell me, what's the price of property and what's the price of the loss of life? So Drew, we do, do have a couple of questions about financing, thank you Chief. There's a, I want you to go over the financing piece.
I have one more thing, the radios we're looking at are what they call a dual band. Deputy Chief Horowitz has done most of the work, pretty much all of the work with the Motorola rep. They've been in good communication. These radios not only communicate on Viper system like we do now. The town also has two repeaters that are on antennas on the water tower down there. If something happens like they had out west and we lost towers and lost communication on Viper, the fire department with these new radios will still be able to communicate amongst their cells in the town during a disaster. You get two radios in one for all the next.
And think how priceless is communication during a hurricane? And we've had a lot of them. Now I understand that our existing radios is going to be donated to a firehouse or two in western North Carolina. Is that the plan?
That is the plan, I can let Deputy Chief Horowitz speak to that. He's been at communication with some people on that already.
DC?
So yes, sir. The plan is to donate to the department in need that they're, they are being vetted right now as to who, who these are the worst. So once I get that, I go and pull it down.
You know, that is really something. To take some radios that we probably could cash in and maybe get a little money out of them. But to, but to offer them up to another firehouse that could really use those, those radios when they're, they're on in communications out in western counties, I think that's priceless. And I, I really appreciate you guys doing that. That's an act of kindness and it's something, it's something that we should do and I'm glad that you're doing it. All right Drew, financing.
Okay. The finance of radios, when they came to me, I guess it was a couple of months ago, said we need new radios. And I'd known how we had purchased the other ones and it's not that they didn't work, they didn't work the way that they needed to work. So I said, well, how much are we talking about? They gave me the amount, I said, let me see what I can, can come up with. I looked through the ARPA funds, you know, we redistributed some of that money for different things. I looked at some of the extra state money that we had and it's like, I couldn't come up with the five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Like, I don't, I don't have enough to do that. So they, Motorola offered a financing plan, which is, if you remember, what we originally did with the police department, what we got their radios two years ago. We did financing plan, but we paid it off with ARPA funds in the first year. We made sure there was no prepayment penalty, we financed them so we could go ahead and get them. When the first payment came up, we paid the whole thing off using ARPA funds. But I didn't anticipate we needed ARPA funds for fire radios at that time. So all the funds are designated. So it's like, well, we can do the same loan that we did for police, but use it as the loan for the, the four to five years. So to keep the cost down at half a million, we're doing a one-time payment in July of twenty-six, so it's in next budget year. And then the first debt payment will be next January because that's when the lease will take effect. So we can budget for both of those in next budget year. And we could potentially during the budget process, the eighty-five thousand, I have enough ARPA funds to do that if we choose to do that with next year's budget and then we only have to finance the debt payments for the next four years. So that's the plan right now, is to borrow the funds. The loan will be for five hundred thousand, we'll do a one-time payment in July for the eighty-five so they can go ahead and get the radios now, which you'll probably get them April-ish. It takes a few months to actually get them. So they'll get them in the spring, but if we order them now, that's when we'll have them. And the budget amendment is just to cover the expense of buying the radios now. The revenue is the loan itself. So that's what the budget amendment's for. We'll actually start paying off the loan next budget year. So any other questions about the financing?
You know, you got a company, Motorola, that's willing to work with us.
They want to sell radios too.
Well, I know that, but they're willing to work with us. Now, I tell you, now, order radios now before the cost continues to increase. And we know they're going to increase, radios do.
That's another thing that we had, if you don't mind me interrupting. Said if we don't get these now, the next offer, the radio is going to, starting in twenty-five, the radio price is going to up.
Go ahead, give me. Oh, I got one thing left and then I'll come back. So you got, you got a company that's willing to work with us and we don't have to pay the first payment until a year from now and we can budget that in the next year's budget. However, if the board approves this tonight, these radios can be. However, if the board approves this tonight, these radios can be ordered and in our firehouse this spring. And I think that is a great, great opportunity and one that we should not pass up on. Go ahead, Commissioner Scholz.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I have a question about just, uh, now, since we already, we're anticipating, like, I'm looking at the, the, the fee schedule essentially for each year and everything and...
Was it a hundred and sixteen something a year?
Yeah, basically. Now, is it possible that maybe in future budgets, we try to pay more towards it to cut back that interest rate?
Most of the time when they do a loan like that, it's based on having that interest rate. I know it's like five and a quarter percent. Most places have a prepayment penalty worked into that. We didn't ask for one for this like we did for police because we knew we were going to pay it off with those funds. Um, being as much things that we have coming up, I would say let's keep the schedule as it is. And, um, you know, doing the loan for half a million instead of five eighty-five, got the, the annual amount down to one sixteen. I think that's a swallowable amount. That's not going to make a major, uh, effect to the, the budget for the future.
But just so I'm understanding, so there is a penalty if we did try to pay it in money?
Right, most of the time there it is.
I, I figure.
Because they want to make their interest. That's how they make their money.
I got you, I got you. Thank you.
That's how they make their money, but we get the radios in our hands quicker as well. Any other comments from the board?
I'm just glad to see that you've had what you need.
Commissioner Lake?
I don't believe they would request them if they didn't need them.
I agree.
Time comes for us to step up and be as, uh, at least run head-to-head with other fire departments in our area. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Lake, Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. Timon McCray.
No, no comment, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion? To authorize the town manager to execute loan agreement and approval, corresponding budget amendment number sixteen and the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for installment financing by Marvin Radio.
I'm happy to make that motion.
A motion, do I have a second? All in favor? Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. Timon McCray votes in the affirmative, motion carries. Thank you very much, Chief. D C, thanks for all that work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schrader's right, so is Commissioner Lake. You wouldn't come up here and ask for those radios unless you really need it. And we appreciate that. We're glad we could do it. Next item up, uh, B, approval of proposed ordinance adoption of right-of-way maintenance. We talked a little bit about this one earlier. And general penalty applies to proposed amendments to the following sections of the code. Section one, section thirty-four nineteen, no, section one through seven. Section thirty-four nineteen, section thirty-four dash twenty-two, section fifty-eight dash twenty-five, section thirty-four dash twenty-three, section one oh two A through one ten, section thirty-four through eighty-four, section thirty-four through eighty-five, section thirty-four through eighty-six, section thirty-four dash eighty-seven, section thirty-four dash eighty-eight, section thirty-four eighty dash eighty-nine, and section thirty-four dash nine one. And that is all under tab twelve. There's a presentation tonight that we're looking forward to it. And go ahead and present, sir.
Evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Chris Allen, the town planner.
Our new town planner?
I'm the, yeah, I'm the new guy. Nice to call me senior management, by the way.
All right.
Feel real good about myself. Um, so first and foremost, um, these are changes that myself, my supervisor and our town manager feel are crucial for code enforcement development. Uh, let me get started right away. I'm going to keep you here all night. Uh, why do we need change in the ever-involving land state of Pro Tem? Adopting new ordinances and amending existing ones is crucial to address the changing needs and challenges of a community. As towns grow and develop, so do the issues related to public safety and overall community well-being relating to code violations. The decision is adoption of amendments will serve as a way to assist pro-mills with holding code violators responsible for violation through appropriate liens and collections with the aim to deter future violations. So with, um, our new way of, um, I guess, operating due diligence and bonding people, we also found a way, um, to be able to have collections, to be able to start collections on money that's owed to the town and to assess the needs as well with program not going to show. Um, the best practices, uh, that I found to, um, help address these, um, outdated and currently unenforceable practices, I found some guidelines and practices that we're going to follow. I spoke with Dan a whole bunch about the legal authority about all these, uh, ordinances that, um, I would like to adopt, I would like to have adopted and to amend. Uh, transparent transparency and data management. Code enforcement cases are going to be public record, of course, uh, with new procedures that are in place. A public will now have access to each step of every, uh, code enforcement case. Uh, along with photographic evidence and documentation showed due diligence and proper notice to violators with justification for our actions. Uh, the research that's going to be done, code enforcement staff is going to utilize new tools for research regarding proper notifications to code violators. The use of Cumberland County tax records, North Carolina Secretary of State's business registration records, and a newly acquired LexisNexis, uh, versus solutions, accurate that database will assist staff in compliance with state statutory and county ordinance law regarding due diligence for notification. So with that, um, with these, this new tool that we have, we're going to be now, um, in compliance with state regulations. Uh, communication, uh, code enforcement staff will inform the public of their violations, provide guidance on achieving compliance with a clear time element, explain their legal rights to appeal staff decisions and outline the consequences of failing to become code compliant. So we're going to put some fees in the fire a little bit. Resident responsibility. Unfortunately, some residents do not become code compliant after being properly notified. And I've seen that in my work as a code enforcement officer in Fayetteville. It happened. Some people just say, no, or they say nothing. They ignore, um, our request. With the enforcement of collections and liens, issuance of citations, which is now going to start happening if all of these are happening. Uh, in town imposed abatements, residents should be held responsible for their actions regarding code violations. So right here, you will see, um, a couple of ways that we can do some research. There we go. Okay. So right up here, we have, uh, Cumberland County tax records. It lists, this is, um, this example, uh, it's, it's our friends down the street, the gas station. So it lists, uh, their PIN number, the owner address, which is in Texas, right? Um, and of course, tax information, which we don't need. But this is all in Cumberland County's tax, uh, administration website. Uh, it's called Pop Property Summary. We're going to use this, uh, to help notify people that they're compliant. On top of that, since this is, um, a business, we're going to be utilizing, um, the North Carolina Secretary of State website. Here you can see, um, registered agent information with multiple addresses. This is in Wake. It's the same one in Wake. This one's all the way out in North Charleston. So all these addresses are going to be properly notified with this information. So it's not just going to go to the site's address, it's going to go to everyone. Next big thing is Accurate. This is something that, um, is extremely important in meeting our statutory requirements for due diligence and notifying, uh, code violators. Uh, it does cost a couple hundred dollars a month. We have it active now. Um, I know how to use it. I've trained, I know how to use it. We're going to have proper training for code enforcement staff through Accurate to use this system to help notify people. Um, right up here, you will notice, um, this reference box, okay? Um, for everyone that we have to send a letter out to, we're going to make sure that we put their contact information that we have through their property summary. If it's a business, it's the same thing. We put their contact information that we have through the property summary of the North Carolina Secretary of State. Uh, but now we have code enforcement case numbers. And that is really important for tracking cases. It's going to be really important for proper notification and it's really important for public record. So if people want to say, hey, I want to buy this piece of property, I want to see if there's any liens on it, are there any open code enforcement cases on it? There's now, um, I, I created, uh, I created, uh, case numbers so that we can properly reference that. So with every search that we have to do, we have to make sure that we, we, uh, cover our butts, I guess. And we have to put a reference number in there and our reference numbers are case numbers, okay? Uh, with that, we will get information, all this fun information down here. We're going to have their full name, it's plotted out for security reasons, uh, their full name, uh, their address, um, their social security number will be available for our finance department to be able to assess, uh, collections and liens, okay? Um, we're also going to have something that's really, really important. We're going to have their most, um, up-to-date phone number. So we can actually get in contact with them. Sometimes our code enforcement staff will go out, they'll knock on the door. If something's really egregious, it's like, hey, let's fix this. And so we don't have to send you the letter. Letters cost money. I'm trying to save some money. Um, with this, we're actually going to be able to call them. So, um, if they don't answer the door, we can say, we'll put in our notes, like, we tried to give them a ring and yeah, they answered, didn't answer, go out, check out the property, close case, reclose case. Um, so all of this, um, will be notated in the note section of their workflow. We're going to be doing a workflow from now on to show, um, all the steps that they've taken in each one of their cases. Really, really important to be diligent about that because in case we ever have to go to court, we can say, this is all the information, these are all the steps that we took to get where we are. That is hopefully going to change within the next budget year. Um, I have researched case management software, um, and proposals have been sent to us. I've spoken to Chancellor Emily about it. We just have to put that into the budget for next year. And they're, it's relatively inexpensive. So case management, they'll be able to automatically generate cases. They're going to be able to, um, essentially have an online database that isn't ours. So if our stuff crashes, right? We'll have stuff saved locally, but if their server crashes, that's, I mean, hopefully they got some insurance for that. Right here on this slide, you'll also see, uh, a case example of what, uh, one of our officers did down here. It's also on this board over here, code enforcement success story. This particular, uh, property here, the public nuisance case, uh, generated by Xavier Robinson, um, was generated in September. The distraction relocated, uh, on the property, the property was posted to notice. Uh, notice violation was sent from the United States Postal Service and, uh, within twenty calendar days, the property was claimed. And so, um, when I came on board, I wanted more of this. I didn't want to have cases that go on for months and months and months. I also wanted to make sure that, um, people were going to be financially responsible for not doing what they're supposed to do. And I think Accurate is going to help with that and I think, um, the ability to have collections and to assess liens on property is really going to help with that as well. So, um, to move on to the background information, everyone up there should have some, uh, information in, in the agenda form. I'm going to go break down that list real quick. Uh, we're going to go, uh, first and foremost with the right-of-way maintenance requirements. This is a new ordinance that I would like to propose. And it's going to stay consistent with our public nuisance ordinances. Uh, it can be enforced under chapter, uh, thirty-four, art two, section thirty-four dash twenty-two. Um, and it's, the, the town has the authority to enact it for general statutes, okay? Um, it's essentially stating that any person owning real property within town, town limits is going to be required to maintain both the property and the adjoining right-of-way under the following criteria. And this goes back to what our citizens were complaining about before. We're trying to get ahead of this as best as we can. So before any vegetation reaches a height of twelve, twelve inches, to prevent any vegetation from approaching on the sidewalk, driveway, or curb or edge of the pavement of the abutting street. To keep such property in right-of-way free of trash, refuse matter at all times, and to keep such property in right-of-way free from the conditions enumerated in chapter thirty-four, article two, section thirty-four dash nineteen, which we'll be getting to, um, shortly. Any questions on that? Anything? Oh, all right.
Chris?
Yeah?
I just wanted to make sure, has, has Dan looked at all these proposals?
He has looked at all of these and he has approved all of them. Otherwise, I would not be sitting here in front of you because I'm not trying to waste any more time.
Yep, I just wanted to ask that question as you continue to move to the...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
This is one of the changes, I just wanted to go ahead and get that on.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I'm so sorry. I thought I explained that before. I'm so sorry. Um, so second portion of, um, of our new ordinance, this is for vehicles. Now, this is really important because there's no real penalty, monetary penalty attached for code enforcement compliance with vehicles. And this new section is going to help us with that. It's essentially going to tie into section one dash seven, the general penalty. And so you will see there, it's going to be at the very, very bottom of our vehicle ordinance. And I propose it to be section thirty-four dash ninety-three because it's a reserved section. Moving on to our amendments portion, I'll try to be as quick as I can.
Chris, hold up a little bit.
Sure.
We've got these two ordinance, one right-of-way maintenance and the other one for vehicles.
Yes.
Before Chris goes any further, is there any more comments about either one of these two ordinances before we go into the next section? Yep.
Uh, Chris, you said twelve inches. Um, does that include ryegrass that starts growing in it?
It includes any vegetation. And that, that herb is just going to be cleaned up, um, you'll, you'll see in a few minutes, um, in regards to section thirty-four nineteen.
But I know that I get blood, when it rains, I get blooded quite often. It comes down here right on my grass. And I've always had like, um, centipede. But now someone's ryegrass has come on my grass. And by the time I mow it and you get rain, that ryegrass is up inside. And it might be another week before the guy finishes my yard.
Yeah, then you would have to cut it. Otherwise, it's not enough. Doesn't matter the vegetation, whether it's, unless it's a tree, unless it's a...
I don't think that's quite fair.
If it's, well, if it's...
Or ryegrass, I mean, the whole yard is on that.
Of course.
The patches scattered around the yard.
Yeah, uh, it, it's going to be discretionary. I mean, if it looks like it could be a harbor for pests or anything like that, and code enforcement staff...
Yeah, it would be then.
Not going to bother them.
Yeah.
Um, I, I told them that, I've expressed that to them. I was like, hey, you have to be strategic in how you go about opening cases. If it's like a little patch and there's a couple strands.
Yeah, it's not the whole yard, but where...
But if it's a full yard, I was understanding it was a full yard. If it's a full yard of overgrowth, then yeah, it would happen.
Yeah, no.
Okay, yeah. Um, same thing with dandelions. I look at dandelions, like, yes, they're weeds, but can we either flower? Is it, is it going to be a harbor for pests? Probably not. If anything, you might get more bees in your yard. We need more bees, right? And so, um, my thing when I was in code enforcement, if I can see through it, I'm not going to bother you. I'm not going to sit there and waste your time or potentially give you citations or even bother you with letters. It's not worth it. But if there is large patches that could potentially harbor pests and create a public nuisance, then code enforcement should be able to act on it. That answer your question?
Any other questions? Commissioner Scholz?
I would, uh, yeah, I, I would assume and hope that they would have that kind of discretion because in the same aspect, like you're saying, like, the neighbor's grass is encroaching on her property. If someone has flowers... If someone has flowers and they're 12 inches tall, yeah, that would be like, okay, we know it's not meant to be.
But just remember, encroachment of vegetation from other people's property onto your property, it is now your responsibility. It's now on your property.
Yeah.
If a tree falls from your neighbor's property onto your property, it's now your problem. How you two handle that, it's up to you, it's a civil thing, something that code enforcement doesn't take care of. What we will take care of, though, is making sure that where the tree has fell, the property where it's at, they're responsible for taking care of it. That answer your question? Any other questions regarding any of that? Maintenance or in addition to the, to the vehicle ordinance?
Commissioner Gray?
As you go, I know that there's a problem with, there's a man that is handicapped, he got handicapped, he was working out at one of the colleges. He can't take care of his yard. Now, the bushes in front of the house, they're from all the way to the top. Doesn't have the money to cut it. Does the town offer any service that you can go there and take care of his yard and bill him to that?
He's more than happy to contract, contract that job out. But the only time we use our contractors is when we have to do force abatements. So we don't have anything where the town will set that up. That's something that we could potentially look at, I'm not sure, I can't really answer that question. I've never heard of it. But I will be presenting something somewhat relating to that when it comes to graffiti abatement, so.
Yeah, good guys go handicap people that can't do what graffiti, if we could, they had played at a primary...
And then we also have military members that aren't here as well.
Right, right.
It's one of those things where, you know, it's good to, you gotta take care of your property. It's not just you that's gonna be affected, it's gonna be your neighbors. And so it has to happen in one way or the other. Our code enforcement staff does work with people. Our timelines are not, it's not concrete all the time. If someone asks for an extension, I'd like to be able to sleep at night, say, "Hey, let's give them an extension, give them extra time, because money is hard to come by."
Let's hold up, I'm gonna ask the mayor, Dr. Kimon McCray, she have any comments?
No, I don't, I don't have any comment.
Okay, thank you. Continue on, Chris.
Love living in the 21st century.
Alright.
Let's, let's move on to our amendments portion. Section 1-7, the only real big changes in there is the removal of imprisonment option. That is, it's a little unnecessary. And the rest of my colleagues agree that, Dana agrees with that. On top of that, down to Section F, it's gonna add in the potential for liens inflections for charges related to public nuisances. Which is really, really important. And so we have tens of thousands of dollars in payments that the town has just lost. Because we have to go out and do abatements, but we haven't had any way of getting that money back. Unless they come in willingly to pay, at the nicest of their hearts, they don't. And it's budgeted, and it's something that I think that with Accurate now, with the tools at our discretion, we can collect on that money and potentially put liens on people's homes for these types of violations. And of course, it's allowable through state law. Any questions on Section 1-7? Section 34-19, this is the big one, this is what I was talking to you about earlier.
Hold up, Commissioner Marla?
Sir? For the general counter, are we talking about, if we're going through a collection...
It will be eventually, yes. If they fail to pay...
Are we doing this collection, it's a town lot for every department that issues code enforcement or code violations?
Oh, I will say that one of the biggest hurdles that we've had for decades in terms of code enforcement would be the teeth. Because the lien was always an option, but if you have a lien and he lives in New Jersey and he's not selling the property or the house, you're not gonna collect it until that happens. We have always talked about collections, but we didn't have access to the information to be able to do it. The Accurate program provides us with that information. PD uses Accurate, but for different reasons. So Commissioner Marla, I think what you opened up is very crucial. Through Mr. Day's successes in digitizing our whole code enforcement operations, it is gonna open up the door for other departments to be able to utilize the same service to do that. The key was finding the program to allow us to move forward with what we're talking about. So I do think that that probably can't be expanded to other departments, they have to go through collections or things that nature. But it started with that Accurate program.
It, it does. And myself and Emily, we've met with department heads, and we're gathering people who are interested in getting on the Accurate program to be able, like, stormwater, stormwater to issue citations. And if people don't pay those, we can now go after those, close people for not paying those citations. That answer your question? Alright, section 34-19, first and foremost, to kinda go off what we were talking about before. Overgrowth is not just for weeds, for a whole bunch of other things, right? And so changing the title of it is really important, and I would like to change it from "Uncontrolled Growth of Weeds and Accumulations of Refuse" declared a public nuisance to "Required Duty of Property Owners and Occupants to Keep Property Free from Nuisances Considered Detrimental to Public Health and Safety." All encompassing, not just weeds, not just little, little bits of trash in your yard, I'm talking appliances, right? Jagged edges of metal and anything, you know, a child could walk in that yard and get hurt, if someone wants to keep a broken toilet outside, it's crazy. So biggest change is there, other than the title. Updating the elements which constitute nuisances and addition of fence and perimeter wall repair requirements, which we do not have yet, okay? And so, big things, I'll list off a couple of those nuisances. Animal vegetation, man-made material, or dirt matter that is offensive by virtue of odors or vapors. Or by the inhabitants therein of rats, mice, snakes, and vermin of any kind, or a concentration of any combustible material that is or may be dangerous or prejudicial to the public health. All encompassing. Some new portions of this particular section address clear lots and how they should be maintained and free of uncontrolled growth of at least five feet from a public right-of-way. So it kinda touches upon our, our right-of-way maintenance. If you see a big, big lot, if nature wants to take it over, that's great, give me five feet, that's it. Any fence or perimeter wall is determined by a planning and economic development services director or their designated, which through neglect, lack, of prepared type or manner of construction, method of placement, or otherwise constitutes a hazard or endangers any person handling the property. You got a busted wall that could fall on someone and kill someone, you gotta fix it, same thing with a fence. Any questions on that? That is the real, real big one, really, really important, something that code enforcement has to do with on a day-to-day basis. Any questions, comments, concerns on that? Moving on. 34-22, failure to abate. The biggest thing with that, updating the ordinance to reflect contractors to make public nuisances instead of having employees of the town go out. It's crazy. We are not gonna go out and cut someone's lawn and get paid for it, we're just not gonna do it. I don't think it's fair to Don and his crew, I don't think it's fair to code enforcement, I don't think it's fair to me, Emily or Chancellor, they have to do that. We are updating our contractors, I'm getting more of them, so we have more people putting out bids. People that wanna accept jobs right-of-way, they're gonna be, we're gonna have more, more people to put out bids, which is gonna make it a bit more fair to our, to our citizens, okay? Another big thing here will be the changing of minimum penalties for chronic violations. If you have more than one violation in a calendar year, you're obviously gonna get the message the first time. So this is gonna raise the minimum penalty, the maximum penalty allowed by state law is $500. So for the first offense, it's gonna be a minimum $100 penalty for the first offense not to exceed $500. For the second offense, it's gonna be a minimum $250 penalty, not to exceed $500. For the third and subsequent offenses, it's gonna be, the minimum penalty's gonna go up to $500 for three or more. It's one of those things, you know, you get it, if you have, if you have something out front, say, you know, a busted up car, or you have some trash in your yard, clean it up. Otherwise, you get a citation. If it happens again, hopefully you clean it up where you don't get an even higher citation. Just like if you go out and you're speeding. If you're a chronic speeder, your, the fences just get worse. Where I did law enforcement, if you got a few more, I think it was more than three speeding tickets above a certain speed, your license is gone, right? Really, really important to help us kind of deter people from being a chronic violator. Section, any questions on that one, by the way? Comments, concerns, nothing? I'll try to talk faster. Another big one here is Section 58-25, removal graffiti by town. I created a program called the Hope Mills Clean Canvas Initiative. It's gonna allow residents affected by graffiti to submit a waiver and an application for free graffiti removal by a town-appointed contractor. It's something that we did in Fayetteville in an historic downtown district. I don't know if any of you remember, right, about less than a year ago, you had people tagging up downtown with swastikas and all that nastiness. I had to take care of that, I was running around like, I felt like a chicken, my head cut off, right? In that particular area of Fayetteville, we offered free graffiti cleanup, historic downtown district. The extra taxes they, they paid for that. Thankfully, we don't have that problem here, graffiti is not a really big issue here in Hope Mills. And code enforcement doesn't really have many cases on it. But I created a waiver as well as a, an application for this program. And I think giving it a name, making it marketable, getting the word out about that will help our citizens reach out to us more.
Chris, who's paying the town-appointed contractor?
That would be us. We would go by the fee schedule that we have for that, though, unless we have to bid it out. So we have a fee schedule for graffiti removal already for code enforcement activities.
Questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Marla.
Yeah, also, I think we can also, because we have people that sometimes will volunteer for this kind of stuff. We do get quite a few complaints about, you know, like, the grass on sidewalks and stuff like that. We can also try to see if we can get volunteers if there's graffiti, because I know, like, discussion with HPC, they have the chemicals to clean headstones, surely can do graffiti, so, you know, instead of try, maybe we can seek out volunteers before we try to paper out that sort of... Just an option.
Well, if that was a case, that would have to be the only thing. But with that, they would have to get in compliance in a certain amount of time. So this particular amendment to this graffiti ordinance states, okay, you can participate in this program, we'll take care of it. If you don't contact us to participate in the program and you keep the graffiti on your wall, it's a citation.
Ultimately, we'd come down, like, someone's complaining to a town, "Hey, I seek graffiti." So they would kinda have to act now.
They would have to act.
Act now.
Because once you get an NOB, at that point, there's a timer, unless you ask for a, I was about to say, unless you ask for an extension.
Yeah, okay.
I'll just wait real quick on the volunteer issue, we might want to steer clear of having volunteers who work with town really well, to just provide a little courtesy.
Especially since they have a timeline regardless, it would just...
That would have to be, I think, something completely separate from what we're trying to do. If they wanna do that, have it, as long as it's gone. And as long as the town doesn't have anything to do with it. Any questions on that, Commissioner Marla, you have something?
I just have, just a point of clarification for me mainly. We aren't just talking about the ride, we're not talking about, we're not talking about the whole yards here. We're just talking about the first, whether it's in the center of the road or...
Wait, are you talking about graffiti, or are you talking...
We're talking about the, the, this is the approval proposed ordinance adoption drive, correct?
That's one of many, there's about 15.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, so, so these other ones here, we're not talking about just the drive.
This, for the adoption for the right-of-way maintenance, that's specifically in front of people's houses, right before the roadway. So essentially, if you have, if you have a sidewalk in front of your house, keep it clear of trash, debris, and overgrowth. And a little patch of grass between your sidewalk and the roadway, Don and his crew aren't gonna go out there and cut that, take care of it. It's right-of-way.
That's what I'm saying, what we're discussing here is change this, change this to the ordinance for the right-of-way maintenance, correct?
This right-of-way maintenance ordinance is a completely new one, does not exist yet. So it's not, it's not a new one.
Yeah, I think he's asking if all of these amendments only apply in the right-of-way. And I think what we're saying is, is in addition to right-of-way.
That's what we're getting on, that's what we're getting on, and getting into people's yards and getting into people's property, we're just talking about, we're...
I think you're talking about both, because we are talking about a maintenance of right-of-way, which is an issue typically on commercial lots where they don't wanna cut the right-of-way. But we're not getting in the people's yards doing anything new, we already actually have that authority through code enforcement. But the issue has been, we have reached barriers with enforcing that through civil penalties. When you have someone being in addition to the right-of-way, they're not cutting any time of yard, or they have to dump vehicles on the time of yard. So the title says right-of-way maintenance, but there are also other elements that do encompass the entire yard. Not with any new authorities, authorities that we already have, but I think you're adding more teeth to the enforcement and civil penalties portion.
It's when it arises to the level of nuisance, where it wouldn't just be within the yard is, you know, reached the limit, it's, you know, it's to the point where it's attractive.
Just because, just because your, your garden is ugly doesn't make it a weed.
Because when I, I just wanted to clarify this, because when I say right-of-way, I'm thinking from the center of the highway, you know?
Five feet or whatever, yeah.
So this particular ordinance is essentially the right-of-way in front of people's houses.
I have one more question, if I can, right quick. 34-22, failure to abate, and we're talking about, we're talking about contractors? What's the liability for a town if we have a contractor that got there and cut it? And that's right-of-way, so basically, I don't really have any authority there. If you're on my property, and I don't want you on my property, and I tell you to get off my property, where, where would we stand there? What, what do we do about it?
So...
If you're having a contractor that got there and do a cleanup, you know?
This is something that we already do, and if we feel as though there are not-so-friendly people there, we will ask PD to go to...
I was gonna say that too, we've had several instances where, and you gotta realize, before we actually contract it out, you're talking about months of non-compliance, of actual notice of violations. So in the event, you recall, the property that is on the corner of that lane, there was arson on that piece of property. And when I took over code enforcement, I inherited eight months' worth of notice of violations. But because it was tied to arson, but because police was involved, I get reset and did another three months' worth of actual notices. And after the third month, I told the owner, "I'm not calling you again, the next time you look up, it's gonna get police socks on that property with dump trucks to remove everything on there." So in the event that we actually have to go on someone's property to abate something, to cut their yard, this would be under the authority of the general statute that we have. But because you're probably going on someone's property, we probably have a next one from PD to be able to make sure the staff and the contractor that we hired is safe.
And if there's a situation, say, we can't get into a backyard that's completely fenced off, or it's unsafe, the contractor's going there, we're not gonna go down and break down fences, at that point, we would just issue a citation.
And I wanna stress... And I want to stress, these are not new things we're doing. We're strengthening our ability to be more aggressive at enforcement. That's what you're seeing with all these changes.
Mr. Burris?
Now, this, this also covers businesses as well.
Yes.
Okay, what about?
Code enforcement, code enforcement takes care of not only residential, but commercial properties.
Okay, what about, I know years ago, we had a problem with CSX. They did, they just want us to go there and get, like, figure out how to stand there.
I can, I can speak with firsthand, firsthand experience. I have dealt with CSX in the past, federal entity, can't touch it.
So the graffiti just stays there and they stay.
I had that problem right now in Fayetteville. And I, I spoke to people at CSX. I, you know, I asked them to clean up, clean up their Braille ties. I asked them to move graffiti from a, some electrical box or something, um, right at Franklin and Ray Street. And they wouldn't do it.
Well, I went down there and talked to CSX and finally got them to move the Braille ties out.
I got, they eventually did it after a couple of months of bugging them, but the graffiti they didn't touch. They didn't, they didn't get it around. And so my understanding, it's federal, zero jurisdiction over.
There's a nice little pine after that. I'll do that.
So if you're able to bring some good words in your ears, please, please do it. Yeah, if, if you can help, if you can help out in that situation, please. Because that kind of stuff, just, they'll look at us and kind of laugh and just. And there's nothing we can do to enforce it. Here's one else you got, all right. Any questions on the, uh, Clean Canvas Initiative or any graffiti stuff that we went over? Okay, uh, section thirty-four twenty-three cost collections, this, um, this is already in existence. The only really big change is in section B, um, where the public nuisance existed and shall be collected as unpaid taxes and/or sent to a third party collection agency. Here has that and the works are ready. And so now we just need, uh, people's information to go with that. Any questions on thirty-four twenty-three cost collections? One oh two A dash one ten, if you decide to pass this tonight, it's going to have to go in front of the joint planning board. Um, so this is, this is one of those, this is a zoning, okay?
Uh, fees?
The only really big things in here that are changing are the fees. In all cases where work for which a zoning permit is required or has begun before a permit is obtained, except for where special permission is granted to proceed by the planning department, the permit fee due to the town for the zoning permit shall be twice the amount of the regular permit fee specified here and not to exceed five hundred dollars. So what does that mean? They start a project, they don't get a building permit, code enforcement sees it. They say, hey, Chris, these guys are building something, where's the permit? They don't have a permit. We can now double the fee up to five hundred dollars.
We have several of those around town, I think.
I, and you're right, I think that's everywhere. And I think something like this is going to deter people from starting projects without getting the proper permitting. Whether it's an accessory structure, fence, or building, right? If you're going to get, if you're going to start a building, you got to start with zoning. And so you got to get that zoning permit. But it's really important to understand that that fee cannot exceed five hundred dollars statutory requirement. Any questions on that?
Update, uh, update us, Chris, on why this has to go to the joint planning board?
This is, uh, zoning ordinance. This is not like the public nuisance one that we're talking about or, yeah. So if you guys pass it, we're going to have to take it to the, to the joint planning board. We're going to have to take a look at it.
And then, and then it'll come back for another vote?
Yeah. I believe so. Don't quote me on that.
Yeah, we're just, we're just voting tonight just to send it to the joint planning board.
But this is for the particular one, yes. The other one's not, not at all, but for this particular one, yes.
Is this the only one?
This is the only, section one oh two, yeah.
Can you on, Chris?
All right. Uh, last one, this is, uh, also a big one. It's this entire screen, essentially, this is the, um, this is for vehicles, junk vehicles, nuisance vehicles, abandoned vehicles that are around town. Um, I'll run down this list really, really quick because there's been very, very small changes, mostly just to include the word junk, okay? So section thirty-four eighty-five, abandoned junk or nuisance vehicle unlawful removal authorized. Updated the titles of ordinance as well as updating the ordinance to include junk and nuisance vehicles in the ordinance. Okay? Section thirty-four dash eighty-six, any questions on that, by the way? Sorry. Thirty-four eighty-five, any questions? No one, it's going, hold on. Uh, thirty-four eighty-six, removal of abandoned junk or nuisance vehicle through towing requirements. Updated the title of the ordinance as well as updating the ordinance to include junk nuisance vehicles in the ordinance. In addition, the city manager was added to the ordinance for appeals. So what that means is really important. If someone says, hey, I don't think that my car is a junk vehicle, they can appeal it. With city manager. Right, so it doesn't have to go to the Board of Adjustments or anyone else. It can go right to the city manager. They can, they can send that appeal, I create an appeal form for it. They can send that in, they have a time element attached to that. Um, they have to send it in with a certain amount of time. Once we get it in, there's going to be a hearing with the city manager.
Does the appeal process stop with the city manager?
Yes, yep, that's it. Final decision, that's it.
Go ahead, Chris.
Now, I'm looking through this. Can you, I, I don't know if you have that information. Can you, um, give an actual definition of nuisance vehicle? Because I mean, I'm, I'm trying to think of the vehicles I see around town that are maybe parked in people's driveways. Is it something with a cut tailpipe that sounds like a, you know, lawn mower going down the street kind of thing?
So a junk vehicle, and this is, this is something that we're going to get to in a second. A junk vehicle is essentially a vehicle that can't be self-propelled on its own or it's partially disneyed or. On top of that, to, to match the statutory requirement, it's got to be missing a, uh, a license plate. Or it has to have back tax on it. So if it doesn't have back tax, it's not missing a license plate, the vehicle is facing us, we can't see that license plate. So North Carolina doesn't have license plates in parked vehicles. Right? At that point, it would become a nuisance vehicle. That make sense? Abandoned vehicle, somewhat self-explanatory, but we're following all the statute requirements for that now.
Now, follow up question would be, do you consider trailers, because they have plates, part of a nuisance vehicle?
Got a builder?
Oh, yeah.
We're talking about like that. Home trailer or something that is parked?
Like camper or, um, trailer where they can haul junk or any of that.
To me is a vehicle.
Okay.
All right? It's, it, you know, it's one of those things if it's derelict. Uh, I don't think we can necessarily call it a, a junk vehicle because it wasn't intentionally created to be self-propelled on its own.
Yeah.
But nuisance.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, whatever?
Years ago, um, and I don't know if it's still like this or not, but people that had abandoned vehicles or those that are in the yard that, that can't drive or whatever, we were told when I was on previous board that we could not touch that as long as there's still a lien or they still owed money on that vehicle. No matter if they could not drive it or whatever, that we couldn't haul it away. Now, I don't know if that has changed over the years or what, but it used to be that way.
I don't think that matters. If you have a loan in your car or not, if it's on the property, it's on the property.
Well, that's probably changed because I know that they used to tell us, I mean, here in town, that we couldn't touch it as if there is money still owed on it, but I don't recall whether they could use it or not.
That would be a civil matter between the lender and the person who's either leasing the vehicle or having a loan on the vehicle. It's not a civil matter. Does that sound correct?
Can you on, Chris?
Okay, thirty-four, uh, eighty-six. That, uh, thirty-four eighty-seven, removal of vehicle post-owing notice requirements. Uh, just updated that to include junk vehicles, which is not included before. Any questions on that? Uh, section thirty-four eighty-eight, right to probable cause hearing before sale or final disposition of vehicle. That also does include, uh, junk vehicles, because it's not added there before. Section thirty-four, I'm sorry, any questions on that? Try not to keep you here too long. Section thirty-four eighty-nine, sale and disposition of unclaimed vehicle, uh, added the right to appeal to the ordinance. So with the new appeal process that we're going to have, it's going to go to, uh, our town manager. Any questions on that? Uh, section thirty-four dash ninety-one, um, we did add a nuisance vehicle to the ordinance previously that was missing. And of course, at the very bottom, there is section thirty-four dash ninety-three, which is currently reserved. The general penalty applies. Uh, we spoke about that before, about adopting that ordinance. Sorry to keep you here so long, everyone. I know it was a lot, but, uh, I think these changes are necessary. For code enforcement. Any questions?
Thanks, Chris. Before we call for the vote, any further questions from the board? May I approach him? Dr. McCray?
No, I don't have it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Before we, um, all right, do we have a motion to approve item B, approval of the proposed ordinance of adoption of right of way maintenance and general penalty applies to proposed amendments to the sections that Chris covered? Wait a minute, I got some Emily's coming up.
Just my question, please, adding, I'm going to be adding your motion that I'm able to move forward with the section for the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask the first one, then I'll ask that one specifically. I got to ask her. Okay, so the first one, do we have a motion to approve all the sections? Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
May I approach him? Votes in the affirmative, motion carries, no one opposed. Next motion is section one oh two A dash one ten, fees, adding zoning permit as well as allowing for the char, uh, charging of double of the fees not to exceed five hundred dollars before or after the fact permits. And this motion is for this section to move to the, uh, County Joint Planning Board for consideration and discussion. And motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
May I approach him? Votes in the affirmative, seeing no one opposed, the interim motion is approved.
Mayor, if I could, um, I want to take this time to commend our planning staff because what they have done here is they have completely digitized the code enforcement process. Um, you now have, um, um, technology where there, there is a photograph that needs to be taken of a nuisance, it's timestamped with the case files and things of nature. You now have, if I get a call from Molly on an overgrown piece of property, there's an actual case number and a case file, almost like your process of a zoning case. That does help out a great deal if there is, um, uh, repeat offenders and things of nature. Now, when you're calling on a piece of property, we're telling you that fifty-five, seventy, whatever, has this case assigned to it. If it goes to Superior Court, we now have a much better collection of data. But the one win that we got tonight was the collection. We have been talking about this for quite some time in terms of our enforcement mechanisms and strength we need. And so I commend our staff for putting this together. And I commend the board for, uh, supporting that request.
I agree with you, Chancellor, we're putting teeth into the ordinances, which has been a long time coming. Chris, I want to know where you got that pointer from.
Uh, I got to get that to Hubbard, uh, uh, Deputy Chief, uh, I'll, I'll fight upon Hubbard. If you recall, last year at the delegates dinner, that's when I found out about it. It was like, it has a pointer on it, a laser pointer, uh, the highlighter and all that kind of stuff. So we got to get that to Hubbard, uh, he's our technology guy, our staff.
Does that come in an Amazon box? All right, moving on. Little bit of levity there, Chris. I just, uh, I was going, I was going to ask you about halfway through, and I saw this link to the end. Item C is acceptance of updates personnel policies required by NC House Bill ten twenty and NC House Bill nine seventy-one. All that's under tab thirteen. And Leanne will brief us on what that means and what motion we need to make.
Uh, this is more informational than anything, and these are required, um, by those bills that were mentioned. Um, the reason for bringing them to your attention is because they require updates to our personnel policies. So, um, NC House Bill ten twenty, um, increases the eligibility for them to contribute to our 401K. So our part-time, um, employees, including our elected officials, are now eligible to contribute to the 401K beginning in January. Um, the second is House Bill nine seventy-one, which is a human trafficking bill. Um, but as part of that, the town is required to update their, um, their, their, to update their policies to just make sure that it's clear that, uh, viewing of pornography on government devices and networks is prohibited unless it's for criminal investigations and things like that. Just again, just to bring them into practice and state law. Any questions?
Okay, so the motion that we need to make tonight is, is to authorize you to update the person, the town's personnel policy with these two changes. And bring that policy back probably in January or February of Q one for approval. Is that the motion?
Uh, yes, I can go ahead and make those changes, yep.
Okay, any questions? Do we have a motion?
I would like to make the motion that we approve the updates, the updates to personnel policy as required by the NC House Bill ten twenty and the NC House Bill nine seventy-one.
Motion second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor? May I approach him? Votes affirmative, seeing no one opposed, the motion carries, thank you, Leanne. Item D is last, approval of resolution R twenty twenty-four dash zero twenty-five and corresponding memorandum of understanding between the town of Hope Mills and North Carolina Department of Commerce, and that's under tab fourteen. Chancellor has this.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something procedural, it tied to the Gateway Study. And so when you created the Economic Development Committee, the first project we assigned to the Economic Development Committee was to restart the Gateway Study. NC Commerce, in order to greenlight them to be able to restart it, and it was stagnated due to COVID, is to do another resolution. So when we did the original Gateway Study, it was greenlit with a resolution in order for them to make the necessary updates to the current, um, outdated, uh, Gateway Study. We need that, this resolution passed. And the MOU is just the standard information about what they're going to do, um, to provide us with that data. So this is more a procedural thing. Um, they're on the actual committee as one of the organizations. But in order for them to be able to start over or start the Gateway Study again, they need to, um, have this resolution approved by the board.
Thank you, Chancellor. Do we have a motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty-four dash zero twenty-five? We have a motion, we have a second? We have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I approach him? Votes affirmative, motion carries. All right, we're done with, uh, new business. We'll go to item eight, which is closed session, and Commissioner Skorola has something to read to us.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to conduct a closed session pursuant to NCGS one four three dash three one eight one eleven eight three, to consult with the attorney on matters within the attorney-client privilege. Also, um, pursuant to NCGS one four three dash one, dash one, three one eight dash point one one A six, to discuss personnel matters. And also, um, pursuant to NCGS one four three dash three one eight one 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 A five, to establish sure and stretch the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken concerning acquisition of real property.
Thank you, Commissioner Skorola. Uh, it's nine thirty. Uh, it's nine thirty. I appreciate everybody hanging out with us for the last, uh, two and a half hours. We're gonna go into closed session, and we'll be back as soon as possible.
Keep your mayor name spouting. Ass is rubbing up on the wall.
Um, we didn't go over that, that was something.
Okay, we return to open session. Commissioner, wait a minute. Oh, no, no, no. Okay, you want us? All right. Okay, let me try this again. Now, I got, I think I put Tim, uh, Tim Wan-McCrory is, is, was with us by phone. I'll call the meeting back to order. Commissioner Skorola?
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to move to seal the minutes of the closed session until such a time as the release of the information would no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session, and further, no action was taken.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Craver, do you have something?
You need to vote on that motion.
Oh, yes, sorry. Uh, motion second, all in favor? Mayor Pro-Ten votes affirmative, seeing no one opposed, motion carries.
I would like the board to, um, to accept my resignation off the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board as their liaison.
I'd like the board to consider my resignation off the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board as their liaison.
Commissioner Craver respectfully is going to resign from Parks and Rec liaison position. Uh, with that said, I will nominate a replacement for the Parks and Rec liaison position, and I will nominate myself. And I'll serve in that capacity if that's, uh, approved by the board. So I will need a motion.
Motion to accept Ms. Cravers. Motion to accept Ms. Cravers' resignation and accept the mayor's uh, appoint, self-appointment as a interim, as a interim.
Parks and Rec liaison. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Uh, Mayor Pro-Ten, Dr. Tim Wan-McCrory has voted affirmative, that was unanimous. Uh, so the motion carries. We finish off our meeting tonight with, uh, the last item is monthly reports. Uh, they're all in the agenda for twenty twenty-five annual meeting, uh, dates for all the committees. Our next meeting will be back January sixth, uh, at seven o'clock. And I believe the board will wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Well, so will adjourn, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Mayor, Mayor Pro-Ten votes affirmative, we are adjourned at eleven thirty.
You can go now, if you want.